Twenty-five to order, less than a pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Remain standing for the invocation.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for your blessings on us as individuals, on this town, our town folks, Lord, you've been good to us. We thank you for every little blessing. We just pray that you would keep our town safe. Lord, we just pray that you would make us as councilmen, uh, wise. And the Lord, we will make decisions that are, that are good for our people. That we will be fair in our, in our thinking, in our reasoning, and in our voting. Lord, we just thank you most of all for the one that you sent that died for our sins, and that's the Lord Jesus Christ. And I just pray this prayer in his name, amen.
The first item. On the agenda is to approve the agenda, and we need to make one correction. We need to take off the closed session.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda as it changed. Where's the word I'm looking for amended, thanks.
Motion made by Councilman McGowan, seconded by Councilwoman Dobbin.
I, 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 are we going to reschedule that or at some point?
There is no need for it tonight because we have no new information to discuss. All in favor of approving the agenda? All opposed? The next is the consent, consent agenda items. Y'all have all read them or? Anything that? You have a question about? Motion made by Councilman Jernigan, seconded by Mayor Protem Trippett. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? No, okay. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing to extend corporate limits on Gordon Road, partial ID oh five I oh five two oh two one E. And it needs to be continued to January the twenty-first meeting.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Jernigan, seconded by Councilman McGowan, all in favor? All got?
I'm sorry, that actually should be January twentieth.
Twentieth, okay. Motion.
Second.
Okay. Motion amended. All in favor? All opposed? Uh, ordinance to amend zoning on Gordon Road, partial ID oh five I oh five oh two one E. Needs to be continued to January the twentieth meeting.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Jernigan, seconded by Councilwoman Dobbin, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The next item is a public hearing for the town of Wilson Mills Strategic Plan. We need, and I'm opening, yeah, no, we're going to open the public hearing. Okay. Opening the public hearing to review the town of Wilson Mills Strategic Plan. And y'all have a copy in front of you with the timelines on it. Leanna is going to present this to us.
Good evening. Um, on your table tonight, you received an updated version. The actual plan, strategic plan report is the same as what you received in your packet. What was added was a timeline. And um, for the sake of the public who may have missed the joint meeting with the, with the planning board, I'm just going to go over how this came about. Um, on October eighth and ninth, the um, North Carolina League of Municipalities held a workshop in Winston-Salem. Mayor Fleeta Byrd and team of council, pending council and myself, developed the strategic plan, this draft strategic plan. Um, during the two-day workshop, the municipal team reviewed options using a template that the league provided. We selected four main focus areas, two objectives for each of those areas, and then four, two initiatives or action items for each of those objectives. So sixteen strategic action items for the town to plan to accomplish over the next five-year planning period. After the workshop, the draft plan was reviewed by the full town council, the planning board, and administrative staff. Some changes were made, um, and then we have set out this draft copy for review tonight. So in your copy, the four main focus areas. The first one is a connected, vibrant, and healthy community. The second is economic development. The third is reliable and equitable access to utility services. And the fourth is interconnectivity. And I'm not going to read the full five-page document. We do have public copies available if anybody is interested. Um, it has been available since it was announced that we were having the public hearing tonight. But if you will look behind the report at the timeline, the timing worksheet, each one of these pages is the um, focus area, one of the focus areas. The first one for connected, vibrant, and healthy community. Those objectives were supporting an active lifestyle for residents by providing vital parks and recreational opportunities and cultivating partnerships with local human service agencies, nonprofit organizations, and other institutions to support the needs of the residents. In the workshop, the timing for those goals were for fiscal years twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And just a little bit about why we chose that timeline. One is because you'll see later that some of the other goals we felt were already ongoing and needed to be worked on this coming fiscal year and the next. But the town, the main part of, of this goal has to do with the park. And the town's master park plan will need to be updated in order for us to secure any kind of Part F monies. And that update not only requires town budget amounts, but also input from the public about future park plans and the areas that are currently not being utilized. And then once those initiatives about discussing this with the public are completed with the new master park plan, we've identified, and we've identified the projects to move forward with, we'll invite focus groups to engage and support these park updates, such as groups in the community. And then all completed projects will be publicized in various language and communication formats to reach all the community members. On the second focus area, the next page for economic development. This mainly focuses on planning for town amenities that are attractive and necessary to economic development and promoting the unique character of the community with information about our natural resources, our historical background, proximity to interstates, and metropolitan areas to attract business growth. Um, these timelines, the second goal for promoting the character of the community are slated for this coming fiscal year, twenty-five, twenty-six, and fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven. So over those two fiscal years, we would work on these two initiatives and look at, so that the funding pursuits in the other goals could be, could begin in twenty-six, twenty-seven. Any questions about that? The third focus area is reliable and equitable access to utility services. These main goals were strengthening partnerships and agreements with counties and neighboring towns to ensure consistent and sustainable utility access. And then also plan for long-term infrastructure development that supports growth and ensures service access for all citizens. Because we are already um, in the works for interlocal agreements with Johnston County and surrounding towns, that's going on this, this fiscal year and will continue through the next. And then as part of the, of the agreements that we're referencing now, we plan to include in each one of these a stipulation to meet as needed with the different entities by having a utility coordination committee. And that's something that you talked about creating once these agreements are in place. And then following the completion of those agreements, the um, I'm sorry, I lost my place where I was reading. Following the completion of agreements and utility structures for the town and neighboring communities, the town's comprehensive utility study that was approved back in June of this year would be utilized to create a master plan, which would map areas for growth, upgrades, and maintenance. And that would be the case whether we continue with the agreement with the county. If for some reason we were to take it over, which we've already seen that we're not going to be able to do, or if we go into some type of regionalization or authority. So we would still want to create a master plan for the town so that we know where the infrastructure in our town as far as utility services is going forward. Any questions about the third focus area? And then the fourth focus area is interconnectivity. And these goals would be to improve connectivity and growth of neighborhood and areas in town by investing in streets and sidewalk infrastructure. And then also enhance active lifestyle practices in the community by improving active transportation modes, such as walking and cycling. The timeline for the interconnectivity was put during fiscal years twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and twenty-nine, thirty. Depending on how fast a capital improvement plan were to happen, this could change. But the town's goal for interconnectivity is based on the multi-mode transportation plan that was approved by the planning board back in August of twenty-four. So the goal now would be to have council approve that this fiscal year, and then bring the plan to fruition within the next three to five years to create that connectivity. And that would include sidewalks, bicycle, and pedestrian lanes along streets and areas throughout town. And then areas of construction from that plan would be included in that capital improvement plan. So all of these, all of these goals and initiatives are, first of all, going to focus on securing funding for the capital improvement plan and then funding for the actual construction work to be done. One thing to note about the way that you've got the timeline in your strategic plan, we've added this as an appendix to the report because it would be easier if you change your plans to be able to change just the appendix part of it with the timeline. So you can go in if things change with budgeting, or they change with the capital improvement plan, or any of the master plans that we've talked about in here, and things would need to come sooner, or maybe we need to push them back. It's easier, easier to come back to council and just change the timeline rather than to change the complete strategic plan. I will be happy to answer any question.
Since it's a public hearing, does there anybody in the audience have a question or would like to make a comment? Any, I know that we have looked at this and looked at this. As counsel, we have looked at it about four times.
Nothing has changed, correct, since the last time we looked at it?
Exactly. Except she just added the timeline that we, we had already approved that when we were going through it, so, okay. I closed the public hearing at six forty-four. And I asked for a vote from council to approve our strategic plan.
Make a motion, we approve the town of Wilson's Mills Strategic Plan for fiscal years twenty, twenty-five to twenty-six through twenty-thirty and thirty-one, as presented.
Motion made by Councilman McGowan, seconded by Councilman Jernigan to approve the plan, all in favor? All opposed? Okay. Okay, staff, y'all got your work cut out for you. At this time, we will open our first open forum. If you have anything you want to bring to council, please come forward, state your name, your address, and limit your comments to three minutes. No one wishing to come forward, I cancel the open forum at six forty-six. Regular business. I feel like I have been meeting forever. It seems like every time we turn around, we have meetings. Leanna and Wendy and I attended a um, meeting at the Central Pines on regionalization and several of our towns from our area was there, and members of Johnston County were there. They presented a, a, a format of what regionalization on sewer and water should look like. And um, I'm hoping that it will help us as we move forward with ours. Uh, maybe we can use some of the information that was given. It was very informative, I thought, um, that we had. And that's all I've got, Leanna. Well, go to you.
Okay. Um, the next item on your agenda is the approval of the twenty-twenty-six holiday schedule. And the, we'll, we'll start with that. So the holiday schedule has not changed, other than the dates at Christmas. We always go by the state's holiday schedule, and that's what this is again this year. So unless anybody has any questions or changes.
Make a motion, we adopt the two thousand twenty-six holiday schedule for the town.
Motion made by Councilman Brown and seconded by Councilman McGowan, all in favor? All opposed? Okay.
And the next item is the twenty-twenty-six dates and times for the council and the planning board meetings. And those are also based on the first and third, I'm sorry, the first Monday, the third Monday of the month for council, the fourth Monday for council work sessions, and the fourth Monday following that work session for the planning board meetings. There are some changes on here. If the holiday fell on one of those days, we changed it to the following evening.
Make a motion, we approve the town of Wilson's Mills council member, uh, council meeting schedule, as well as the planning board's schedule, as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman McGowan, seconded by Councilman Brown, all in favor? All opposed? Okay.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Sherry? This is on our fund balance policy.
Yes, counsel, um, you, Leanna had mentioned about a review of the town fund balance that um, that the council wanted to see it again. So um, on September the nineteenth of twenty-twenty-two, the town council approved it. And it states that we should have a thirty-five percent minimum within, throughout the year. Um, sometimes it falls below that because of our expenditures at the time, especially at the first fiscal year, because we have mortgage payment, all these big payments have to come out. But eventually, by the end of the year, it comes back up. And I made a list on this, um, on my letter that I had presented to you, the, the years and the percentages where they stood at that time. And we only fell below the thirty-five percent, and that was in twenty-twenty-three. Jay, our state auditor, or our auditor, he said that he expected it to fall because that's the day, that's the year that we had um, bought Town Hall. And so therefore it fell up under the thirty-five percent. And so, but it still remains in June of twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-four at forty-five percent. So I think we're in good standing still.
Uh, Sherry, a quick, quick question. Um, I remember years ago, we used to have it considerably higher than, I, I don't know what the minimum was at that point in time, but we always had it much higher. I would feel more comfortable now with all of our expenditures pretty much lined up. We know what we've got coming pretty much. I'd be, I'd feel a lot more comfortable raising that thirty-five.
Really?
Yeah, I would. Um, I mean, thirty-five gives us, right now, based upon our expenditures, how much? Three months, four months?
Yes, approximately three months.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be more comfortable with something like six months. So raising it to, from thirty-five to maybe forty-five or, even if you look at what we've been doing, other than twenty-twenty-three, you know, raising it to, I think forty-five percent is something that's not bad.
Right.
Would you, would you expect any problem with that or?
Expect any problems with it, but as cap, I mean, if you'll remember what Leanna read out in our strategic plan, the town has a lot of expenses coming up. Even if we do find funding for it, it may be such as we get a fifty-fifty grant. You know, and if we get a fifty-fifty grant on five hundred thousand dollars, then the town's going to have to pay out two hundred and fifty thousand. So I just want to keep that in mind before you, you know, if you want to increase it.
But it is a flexible percentage. That's what you were just talking about. We can move these things around, so, but, but the more we save, the better off we are. Until we start to incur those expenses, then we can certainly change it, can we not?
You can.
Yeah, I still feel comfortable with something like a forty-five percent.
Sherry, I wanted to ask on these percentages that you presented since twenty-eighteen, are, is this unrestricted fund balance percentages?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and one thing that we may want to consider, and we can talk with the auditor about it, and then bring an amendment back to council about the change in the percentage in there. There is a percentage that the LGC looks at, just like they look at the, the fact that you don't want to go below a certain amount, obviously. But then they also look at the fact that you're not just storing away taxpayer money.
Exactly.
Um, and, and there's a, there's a legal term for the way that they, the way they put that in the statute, K B. Probably tell, but they just want to be sure that we're not, that we're actually using the money that we collect from the taxpayers to
Undertake.
Pay for, for town business. So, and I, I don't know that there's a specific percentage for that, but I'm sure the auditors or somebody at the LGC could advise as to whether or not we would, we just wouldn't want to make it look like we're collecting more taxes to just stash it away.
I don't think we can use the word squirreling in, in the budget process. Now, counselor would probably say it's not a legal term, but uh, it's pretty, it's pretty accurate. But I just, I just look at other towns, and I look at the problems they get into. And I just want to keep an arm's length away from any of that. I don't mean to go overboard and say sixty, seventy percent, but something that's, something that's doable, and it's, it's not exorbitant, forty-five percent to me, that's just my thought is, is.
Well, and other than the year that we bought Town Hall, we've pretty much stayed there.
That's why.
That that percentage would be an issue. I still just feel, I would feel more comfortable rather than trying to pass that tonight, that we do get some confirmation from the auditor.
I would, I would too. It's an, it's an important step, but like I said, I want to maintain an arm's length away from the problems that, uh, was it Roanoke Rapids, or was it Rocky Mountain?
There've been lots.
And, and Spring Lake, Spring Lake and Benson, I, I just want to stay away from those sorts of things.
Sure, sure.
I can um, contact their, uh, Jay in the morning and see what his thoughts are on it and bring it back to council. I mean, if that's, if you prefer that.
Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, if, if, if we, if we as a council think that, that, that we need to increase in the bowl means I'm, you know, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with, with, with saving a dollar. And I was just gonna, gonna say that, you know, based on our strategic plan, and not just our strategic plan, but uh, regionalization as, as Mayor has, has mentioned, um, things that are not, not this year.
Yeah.
But, but they're coming down the pipeline. Um, but you made it, you, you made it, it is flexible. Um, I, you know, I just wouldn't want to jump up there like you said and, and do a fifty percent. I mean, I don't think that's even, even considerable. But I would just, I, I would be interested in hearing back from maybe a work session.
Okay.
And see, just seeing what, what they say.
All right.
Well, if, if we don't change it, we'll have to revise the plan, so that'll have to be.
Am I, am I, I agree.
This plan, if we, uh, yeah, yeah, we'll have to.
Fund balance policy.
Sherry, just refresh my memory, Sherry, am I correct that at one point in time, um, we had a considerable fund balance? And we used, Tim was involved in that, we used part of that to help with the police cars?
Yes.
Am I right? Remember that? So I, I, I see that perhaps coming up, and maybe not for police cars, but other, other things. So if we, I, I, I feel comfortable with the forty-five, and we would have some, some extra cash to do some things.
Okay.
So, yeah, go ahead, J C.
No, I think the attorney.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have too much legal, if you can hear me, too much legal to weigh in on this. Um, I, I, I have sat in on enough audit presentations to know though, that, that they do, they do discourage too high of a, um, a fund balance.
Absolutely.
And, and, and to the point that Councilmember McGowan just made, you know, you, you had probably sufficient fund balance to buy the police cars, but if you had a policy that prevented you from spending down from that, you wouldn't have been able to buy those police cars. So I think there's um, there is some, you know, value in having a, a high enough, uh, policy, a high enough goal so that you do have the funds available, but enough flexibility to spend it down if you need to as well. Um, but I, I, I just second checking with the auditor, see if there's a, I, I'm not aware of a, of a hard cap on it either. But they do start to question.
If it's high.
If it's too high.
Exactly.
They, they pressure you to bring it back down.
Exactly.
Somehow I disagree with you, David. I somehow disagree with, I'd go ahead.
Yeah, it is, it is.
I like having the forty-five percent balance that we've got now, or got now. But I don't think we need to set it, move it up to that amount. I think thirty-five percent's a good amount. Yeah, I'd like to see us keep it in the forty-five percent range. But that, I, I don't think it's, because then if we have to do something that brings it underneath the forty-five percent, we don't have to worry about coming and worrying about it. We, we, if we keep it at thirty-five percent, if we start getting close to thirty-five, then we need to think about it. But I, I mean, I don't have a problem with trying to keep it at forty-five. But I just don't think we need to set that as the, as the uh,
Official policy.
As a official policy. I think thirty-five is, because I, back when I first got on this council, we were at ninety-eight, ninety-nine. And I thought, and I always thought that was too much because we, we're not using the money that the taxpayers have given to us. So uh, you know, it's not that I don't want it to stay at forty-five percent, but I just don't think we set forty-five percent as our, our low number. We're, we're thirty-five percent, it's fine with, with the, the state and everything. That's just my opinion.
The reason I was talking about a little bit higher, Jay, one of the reasons is what you were referring to, Sherry, and that is the, these expenses that we're going to have coming up in the relatively near future that are not already built in. And it may be another police car too. So if we didn't do forty-five, or we did a forty, something like that, we, we, we would have that money, and we still wouldn't attract the evil eye of, of LGC or anybody like that. So think about, think about forty or something like that too. I'll just, thirty-five to me is just a little bit too low. It only gives us, you said, four months?
Yes.
Four months of, of, of protection.
Exactly.
I just feel a little bit more comfortable with something a little bit higher.
And, and I, I think Leanne asked, but I want to make sure, it, it, this is on, these numbers are on non-restricted funds, correct?
Exactly.
Not on the restricted or?
No, it's on restricted funds.
And, and I would just be curious, if you're going to ask him, just get a, if he can get a, uh, what's the norm for a town our size?
Okay.
Just, I mean, that don't mean that we're going to go about, just give us a, why not ask?
Okay.
Are there, are there published rates that other towns are, are holding?
I can look in that tomorrow.
That'd be fun to look at too.
And also make sure that if we go to forty-five, how much would that, how many months would that be?
Okay.
Cause we need, that's the one section we're talking about changing, so we need to make sure it's correct when we.
All right.
When we get it in there. Okay. So now we'll give you some work on, you bring back to us.
Exactly. Thank you so much. Exactly. Thank you so much, counsel.
Sherri.
Yes.
We're still talking fund balance policy. Can I can I go to page two real quick?
Sure.
Uh, just help me out here. On the very bottom, the restricted fund balance and committed fund balance, they're absolutely identical statements, are they not? Is there any difference that I'm missing here? I don't see any any difference.
Okay, the restricted fund balance is money that you say like if the auditor did an audit on our master fund account, cause that's restricted money that we just can't do anything with. We have to have a specific reason why we tap into that money.
Got it.
And you better be good with it. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So, I mean, the restricted and the the committed fund balance is like, the committed is us. We're like the general fund balance. That is us. And but the restricted is for like special funding.
Okay, maybe there's a different way to word the the committed fund balance, because when I looked at it, I read the two and I went, those two are identical statements with with separate uh.
I could just put on on letter C. I could put just general fund balance.
Yeah, some something.
Restricted, like Sherri said, is is usually the state says this amount of fund balance has to be used for this, like our liabilities. Committed fund balance, you probably are more familiar with the term earmarked. If we put specific amounts in a budget for successive years and they're earmarked for certain projects, that would be a committed fund balance amount.
Make.
So we could, we you, another council two years down the road could use that money for something other than what you've earmarked it for because they could vote to change it. But a restricted fund balance could not be changed because that's what the state says. You've got to use your fund balance for this.
I I fully understand that, but to me, it's just it's a question of semantics right now. Okay, and I want to be able to come back and 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 look at these two and and see the difference, like you're saying. Right now, the paragraphs are absolutely identical. There's no difference between a restricted and a committed fund balance. So if we could add some words in there to further define that perhaps, okay, to help me out.
Leanne, just make sure I understand on the committed. It cannot be if if a council was to vote and council, this might be if 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 a a council was to vote only committed amount for five years, as long as it's stated in five years, the if there's a new council, they would have to abide by that. Is that not correct?
They could come in and vote differently.
No, I mean, your budget is only for a year and you set that at the beginning of the fiscal year. Um, I I'd probably have to defer some of this to Sherri, but until you you've um, either entered into a contract or otherwise committed the funds, then then a just because you vote to take a certain action, a a later council can can vote to take a different action.
I wasn't clear. I was talking about if we had a contract to spend X amount of dollars.
That's different.
That's different.
That cannot be changed, correct?
If it's a contract, depending on how it's ordered.
Yeah, a later council could try to terminate the contract, see if there's any provisions that allow for it.
But it's not easily done.
Right. That's that's.
Okay.
That is.
Thank you, Sherri.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri.
If you're with.
Sherri. Thank you.
Okay. Does council have any comments?
Why not comments? I got questions. Um, Leanne, Town Hall timeline, we still looking for December, I'm sure, correct?
The end of December, if that's correct.
Okay, that is good.
And it's looking good if you haven't been to see it.
I'm stopping by this week. I told Wendy earlier, I'm stopping by this week and
It's looking good.
And I'm just gonna sneak in the back there.
They put the cabinets in.
Oh, did?
In the kitchen. Yeah, it looks great.
So right now, we're planning for your December, I think it's the December meeting, doing a walkthrough. Is that right? Is that what we got on there? Um, which is December fifteenth? No, the is it the January meeting is the open house. We were to anyway, I've got it in my notes somewhere. But um, I think we were talking, we had talked about before the December meeting, having a walkthrough over there before we come back here for the December meeting. But we won't have furniture in this until December eighteenth. That'll be the last thing that goes in because they'll have to get out all the wires hooked up for the AV and everything. So the the furniture will be delivered on December eighteenth, but we can still do a walkthrough if you want. Or you can come by anytime and we'll.
Well, I'm excited. I'm excited. We're gonna have a new a new member up on the dais, too.
Looks very different than it did.
Oh, it does. It's not as big as it was. When they start putting walls in there, but it looks so nice. It does. It really does.
Second thing is uh, the the burning in town ordinance. I know we were talking about the U D O being retyped. Has have we made any progress on that, Wendy? Leanne, whoever wants to answer. Up there if you want.
I am working, still working on that. Um, even though part of it, we tried to retype it. We've had to even go back a little further with some reformatting on it. But I am still actively working on that. Um, blocking some time off to try to get it done.
Oops, how much is remaining, Wendy? I mean, I'm looking at a lot of, I'm looking, my two concerns were the 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 burning, obviously, and also the uh, the setbacks for developers.
I'm about halfway through with it at this point. With everything else that's coming in, I can't focus on just that for long periods of time because I'm having to address other things that are coming up as well. But I'm, I am trying. I have even taken it home with me at night to try to work on it some, to try to get it done.
Well, I I'd say I appreciate you doing that. I I certainly don't expect you to do that. Um, but I appreciate you doing that. And I'm gonna ask, I think Dave asked one time, but I'm gonna ask again. Would it help you if this council or if y'all looked into getting uh, somebody from the outside that we we could help get that done with you? Or do you need to be hands on involved?
I need to be hands on with it because of some of the changes and the wording that needs to be involved with it. We we need to make sure it's right. And if you bring in an outside person, they're not going to understand some of the language and the lingo and the legal terms, and we just need to make sure when we do it this time, it's done correctly.
I just wanted to ask and and then again to follow up to see if we needed to look at outside resources, but you answered that question. Uh, nuisance abatement. What did we come up with on that? I think we talked about that in our uh, work session, I think it was.
As far as changing the timeline on our nuisance abatements?
Yes.
Um, Gabe and I have tried several times to get together on that and between his schedule and my schedule. Um, it can be changed. It can be changed at council's discretion. I did a little bit of research and the towns around us are all basically where we are with the fifteen days. And the reasoning for that is by the time you find it, you type the letter and you mail it and you give them a chance to respond. Some people work Monday through Friday and can only address these things on weekends. So they need at least one weekend in there to be able to do whatever they need to do. And if they happen to work on call or every other weekend, they may need extra time. Now, if they call and ask for an extension and they have a good reason, yes, we'll give them an extension because we are, we're trying to work with them.
But don't we all automatically give them an extension if they don't respond on that first fifteen day letter? That we send another one, giving them another fifteen days?
Yes.
That's an automatic extension.
We have to. You can't automatically abate it as soon as you send them one letter. You can't automatically go in there and do what needs to be done. You have to give them fair warning after you've asked them to clean it up. You have to give them fair warning that since you didn't, we're going to.
What about that that uh, you mentioned at one point in time, a habitual offender? What's, is that rule still in effect?
That rule is still in effect and Cleber is getting me a list together of the ones, and actually I can look back at the list myself, um, the ones that have had at least three letters in twelve months for the same violation. We can mail them a chronic letter and effective next year, if we have issues with them, we can automatically clean their stuff up without having to go through all that process.
Okay, I'm just very, I'm I'm just very concerned, as is as is council member Brown, that um, we have, we have too many uh, you know, Home Depot garden tractors sitting in yards. That's just an example, but you 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 know what I'm getting at. Okay, thank you.
Um, yeah, and I'll just echo. I I I looked into this, refreshed my memory and checked your town ordinance. Um, prior to the last meeting, uh, it didn't come up. And so I'm I'm running off a little bit of a rusty memory here, but um, I did notice that there was the fifteen days stating in your ordinance, you can change that. Um, you know, I, but I don't have, you know, Wendy addressed the reasons why it's at fifteen days. Um, it could be shorter. I don't think you'd run into a legal problem if it was shorter, not not legally. Um, and certainly the habitual offender uh, statute that she referenced, she accurately described that that. Um, and I I again, just going off memory, I think it is three, three warnings or three of of violations in the prior year. But if they meet that criteria, whatever it is, and you send them a notice, um, notifying them that they're going to be um, counted as a habitual offender, then you can, you can summarily abate, which means just go in there and take care of it as soon as you notice that it's a problem without having to send any notices.
It'll be interesting to see the uh, the list that he comes up with. Thank you.
Yeah, and 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 the the number of vehicles that's just sitting in in yards, backyards, on streets, um, where fire trucks can't even turn around. Um, it's getting to be, we we're gonna have to nip it in the bud, as Barney says. And um, and and if we don't go ahead and and pursue it and pursue it aggressively, it's gonna get more out of control than I think that what we as council even realize. Um, because you ride by a neighborhood and I intentionally look, I think everybody in some neighborhoods thinks they gotta have about four undrivable cars, whether they need them or not. So and the other thing is the percentage on rentals. Did we find out on the percentage on rentals that we can work work away from? Maybe towards, probably away from.
According to the blogs on the School of Government website, you cannot legally put a percentage of rentals. The town can't legally put a percentage of rentals on a homeowners association. If the homeowners association chooses to do that, that's up to them. But unless I missed something, I don't think.
We ask the homeowners association to do it?
I'm not sure what the legality of that would be, but if it's legal, we can definitely.
The question, I didn't hear.
And we ask the homeowners association to do it?
I know, I know my my HOA has one. And and we we abide by it and we're very happy with it.
Then the properties have to be built before the homeowners association is established?
I don't, I don't know. I don't, we can, I think we can change our percentage anytime we want. I'm not sure, though. If if that were the case, we'd we'd probably knock it down to like five percent, but you may be right. I don't know. I'd have to check with the HOA on that.
Until until there's um, where Councilman McGowan lives, uh, the actual developer is the HOA until he turns it over to the community. Um, and they have, matter of fact, they have two HOAs because one section was finished and and the developer turned it over. Then the next section was finished and he turned it over. So if you have an HOA, the developer is the HOA until they turn it over. Now, I'm not sure that 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 what is existing, it would probably be a lot more hoops to jump through to to lower the percentage of what we have or at least not let it keep rising on on rentals. But I think we could certainly, any more developments that come in, put a percentage on those even before there's an HOA and even before there is a groundbreaking.
I don't know that we can do that. Uh, as much as I'd like to see that, I don't know that we can do that. That's that's an HOA thing.
Yeah, I don't. So two things on that. I I don't know off the top of my head whether that's legal or not. I am I have a a memory of that being something that a court of appeals has stated is improper as a land use regulation. And I'll I'll do some research if if council wants to consider whether they can or can't do that. Um, but with that being sort of an open question, I would say that if it's determined that the council, the town cannot impose a cap on rentals, I would generally advise against asking the HOA to do something that the town council can't because it's legally prohibited from doing so. Just strikes me as inviting a potential challenge, yeah.
Yeah, it's something we don't want to get into.
Well, I I I'm, ear, and I think you said ear, if it is a a legal issue. But if it is not, you know, you you have, you have homes that are built, neighborhoods that are built. And I guess Dave's HOA can mandate a percentage. I think he stated that in the work session or, um, so the 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 more subdivisions that are built, the more investors that there are who are looking to buy houses and turn around and and rent them out. Um, and it's probably more prevalent now than it ever has been. And um, and we just need to make sure we know what's going on. We have our hand on the pulse of our of our community. You know, we 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 talk a lot about the funding. We talk a whole lot about the funding. Um, but but this is something that's just as important to Dave's neighbor as it is mayor's neighbor and my neighbor, um, about what that house next door across the street is going to become. Is it gonna become a rental prop property? Um, and that's the reason that I ask, and maybe council can, you know, maybe what what I'm talking about is not not legal, but it it may not be, but it may be. I don't know, but um, I'd be curious to know, you know, not in in time.
Some somewhere, and I don't know how it it works, but when a developer builds the community, it's his HOA. And of course, the town, the owners are involved in it at that point. But knowing developers like we know developers, why are they putting, why would they put a percentage in their covenants right off the bat? When they know full well, if they don't put anything in there, they could sell those houses to these national uh, national uh, rental agencies, and that could be a hundred percent. And then when he turns it over to you, he goes, see you later. It's a hundred percent and you can't change it. So where is it coming from that it's a twenty five percent? Is there is there something in the statute somewhere that says the developer has to leave it at, you see what I'm getting at, council or members, council? If there's nothing in writing and no requirement, he's, they're gonna set them at eighty, ninety, a hundred percent. Who cares? They don't care. Once they sell, once they move out, they're done.
Dave, I don't think the developer really cares. Once he's building and he sold it.
Right.
He's done with it. I think once he, what happens is once, maybe with your neighborhood, if I if I remember correctly, is once he's done and he and the developer turns it over to an HOA board.
Yeah, maybe.
Then they can develop other restrictions. You know, the developer may say, well, you can only build this fence or or that fence and and this, that and the other, some some very narrow uh, things that he would have to decide. Once he turns it over, some of these HOA companies probably have a a sheet of stuff that they'll, you know, if you want to include this in your HOA policy, I guess.
Yeah, I I would agree with you. I think that's probably where the uh, the limitation comes in is when it's turned over from the developer to the actual HOA, to the to the residents. Go ahead, counselor.
Yeah, the distinction here, and again, I I'm not sure the the answer in, you know, on on the question, but the distinction is between property owners who can covenant among themselves on what their neighborhood is to look like and how they what they want to restrict within their neighborhood. That's what the HOA would do. Versus the local government imposing on them via land use regulations, what they can or can't do with their property in terms of renting it. And that that's, the latter is subject to higher. what they can or can't do with their property in terms of renting it. And that, that's, the latter is subject to higher scrutiny under the law.
Yeah, that's where we, that's where we need to just stay out of that business and leave it up to HOAs and hope they have common sense. Well?
Long-term. They've set regulations for long-term that we cannot.
Control, control.
However, short-term rentals like Airbnb.
Well, is what, or, then what you're, you're saying is these homes that are being built by, and, and purchased by long-term rental companies, they're governed by the state? The number of them is governed by the state? And those restrictions, do they incorporate the number allowed in a community? Probably, okay, all right, okay.
That, that's not gonna be something that they're gonna.
All right, we beat this horse to death. We're gonna stay out of that business.
Any, any more comments from council? Wendy, thank you.
I just want to say thanks for Patrick. That's a, uh, that was a great job on the fire hydrant. And congratulations to Councilmember-elect Doris Riley.
At this time, I'll open the second open forum if anyone wishes to address council. No one wishing to address council. I closed the open forum at seven twenty-two. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion made by Councilman McGowan, seconded by Councilman Jernigan. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you.